You can fix it if you want to. My daughter through tears was like, but we've moved on. The material's not as fresh. Um, and it would just take me a lot of time, but now that grade is affecting my current grade. I have talked to so many students about this to see if it's something that just my family is experiencing or is it something bigger? And time after time after time, it comes up that it is an issue. In fact, I've never spoken with anyone that it's not. Um, I did an informal survey on Facebook recently on the mom's group. Um, and it was an issue. Um, and I've talked to teachers. I sit on the high school. Um, what is it called? The council, the school council? And um, where we've been talking about this and I was talking to the special education teacher and she said that it's really affecting the special needs kids because they have to have feedback in a really consistent manner and she's having to chase down teachers to get grading done. And um, and in the past too, one of our kids, like grading wasn't done from, from certain teachers until right before the term ended. And then by that point, you, they can't do anything to change their grades, let alone like data-driven feedback for both the students and the teachers. Is my teaching being effective? Am I asking the questions the right way? Was this test fairly written? Right? Or are the students just not understanding this? Right? But if this teachers aren't doing their grading, they're not getting that feedback for themselves, let alone students who are like, how can I change my writing? How do I, how do I fix this, this part in math? That may not be clicking, but will affect the rest of, of how I do math in this certain subject. It really just is affecting them. And um, I've talked to many educators. Um, I talked to a professor at Gonzaga um, about professionalism and what is expected and she said that um, the expectation is like a week of return, like that seems to be a, an industry standard. Um, and in the survey that I did, like most parents in Littleton wanted a week return. Um, they just feel that that is valid, right? Now, when I've talked to the administration about it, I want to be clear. I have a really good relationship with the administration. When I've taken problems to them, they have been very responsive. This one though has been tricky. And what I'm consistently hearing is that the, the teachers, and it's not all the teachers, as with anything, it's just a few. But the ones that are having issues are saying things like, if you force me to get my grading done within a certain timeframe, and I'm quoting here, that it will be seen as a hostile work environment. Um, I literally just heard this last week. Um, and also like, we should be free to run our classrooms the way that we want them to be. Or like with the specific teacher that I had issues with last week. Like the teachers are like, well, there's nothing in our contract that says that we have to have our grading done within a certain time. So they're teaching to the letter of their contract instead of what are best practices. And so in trying to navigate, how do we get this change? I feel like the administration has run into struggles because they really try hard to work with the teachers and make the work environment a really good place and listen to them. But there are these outlier teachers that just are saying, there's no, there's nothing in writing, therefore I don't have to do this thing. And in one of these with, one of the teachers that I talked to last week, she's like, yeah, this will probably have to be negotiated into the contracts. So I am here to like, just ask like what can be done? Um, and also like, I asked this fine gentleman, like as a point of information, right? And I just barely asked him before. Like if you might share what your experience has been?
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk about my experiences, someone going through it. Um. I think as a senior in high school, it's, it's some time away from middle school when homework was being graded daily. But there's a lot more focus on quizzes and tests and um, sometimes it takes a while for quizzes and tests to get graded, but they make a big portion of your grade. So if you have a test and another test not much longer after it, if the grading takes too long, then your grade will still appear lower, which frustrates a lot of parents. And the other uh, big issue I run into, if, if anything is um, some teachers do have a policy that if you do poorly on a test, you can correct it, you could make it up. Uh, there's a lot of reasons why a student would do bad. It's not always that they didn't prepare. But sometimes if those tests came later in a marking period, then if you wouldn't get the grade or test returned until the day before, then sometimes you just wouldn't have the chance to make those corrections. So I think that it's, it's also extends to high school level, maybe not so much on daily assignments, but on bigger assignment.
Okay, thank you. And, and also to your point of like not seeing your grade, like teachers not posting it in a timely manner is also an issue. Um, some of our kids were really great about keeping up on their grades and things like that. Some of ours not so great as you would expect with the five kids, right? So for um, one of our children in particular that we really needed to like follow this. He like went into Aspen, I'm like, oh my gosh, you have so many zeros and so many missing assignments. She's like, mom, they're in. I promise they're in, but I'm like, can I believe you? Right? And so it actually creates in our homes, a real potential conflict with parents checking and kids saying, yeah, I did it, but there's not this cohesiveness or what you can work on. Another thing like kids with ADHD. Um, having grades posted in different areas is awful because you have to keep track of it in all these different places and your mind is going all these places anyway. Right? Like having them posted in one place in a timely manner. I know that the grading's going to be done within a week. Right? Or if it's essays, maybe two weeks. Right? But just like bringing it in and putting some structure to it and expectations. So I think will just help calm the system. And like just, I guess one last data point, I asked some of uh, some of my, the friends of one of my kids before my, the school meeting um, last week and I said, is this an issue that you're having right now? And these are some of the top performing seniors in the school. And one of them said, yes, currently I have a teacher where it's an issue. And she said, and last year it was really rough though, because there were three at one time. She's like, that was really hard to navigate. So anyway, so I'm just asking that it be looked into. And um, and if you feel like it's something that needs to be dealt with, like we can work together as a community. If you need more voices, I'm happy to bring people to the table. Um, but anyway, that's, that's all.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Just asking clarifying question.
Yeah, of course.
You were initially talking about homework. Were you, was this um, also like quizzes and formative assessments, things like that?
All of it.
All of it?
All of it. With some teachers, like, you know, their grading is more of one kind than another. Right? And again, not every teacher is, is this way. There is a like, Ms. Elmore, I'm going to call her out because she's so good. Like my daughter said that you handed in your quiz or your test and she graded it in front of you. Like you had your answer, like you knew what you had done before class was over. So there are some teachers that are really doing a phenomenal job. It's just with any organization, you're going to have people that struggle and deadlines are helpful. Um, to kind of spur them and have expectation and also, you know, if it's needed to be in writing. So the job performances can be more affected by it, then that's also helpful, I think, to give our administration tools to help make it happen instead of teachers saying, well, it's not in my contract. You can't control that. At, at least that's what my understanding is that can sometimes happen. So.
Well, thank you for presenting this in such an articulate way and we've done so much research in the community.
Thank you.
It's very cool.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Thanks so much.
Um, I always like hearing from the public.
I uh, want to give the school committee members an opportunity to just add a comment or uh, if they choose to or give the administration a chance. If you don't uh, feel that it's appropriate to respond, that's quite all right. Um, we could hear about this topic at a given point in time. I'll just personally share that you know, my kids are no longer receiving one, twos and threes in our entry school. So Aspen's pretty cool. And um, with technology and how quickly information moves, you know, it's, it's a blessing and a curse at the same time. Um, I do think that we ought to look at um, I, I swear I had the contract memorized at one point in time, but you know, that information escapes me. Um, perhaps it's the information that's in the staff handbook or, you know, people, or see there ought to be some sort of guideline within LPS for uh, timely return of work. Because we talk all the time about data, data-driven decisions and we should reciprocate that back to the student body. They should have a fair uh, judgment of their assessment as they're trying to master these topics. And I, I, I agree with you that it's kind of hard to uh, know what your grade is going to be. If there's a couple of assignments, a couple of tests that haven't been graded and in my own household too, we've had that conversation. Why are there so many zeros? Mom, that is where the work's turned at.
Yeah.
Um, and it hasn't risen to the level of me thinking that there's a problem. Um, but perhaps there is, I don't know. What I have done. So I thank you for bringing the topic.
Thank you.
Kelly, sure. Uh, thank you for bringing this up. Excuse me. I guess my first reaction is disappointment. Uh, I, I have no evidence to believe this is a, a widespread concern. Uh, I'm really disappointed. Excuse me, that somebody actually thought this needed to be in a contract and this is negotiable. Good teaching is good teaching. There is an expectation for any professional educator that you set an example for what you want out of your students. Assessments are a measure of, of student knowledge, but they're also used to help students learn. So, so the time lag uh, should be not that long, depending on the assignment. Excuse me. Uh, for example, our middle school, high school teachers, most of them have a, a student uh, case load of one hundred to one hundred and thirty students. So every time they, they give an assignment, unless it's a multiple choice uh, test, uh, it takes some time. So we have to be reasonable in terms of turnaround time. But the example you gave is, is not reasonable. The responsibility of a good teacher, and I believe our district has all of your teachers, is to help students maximize their learning. And by doing this, you, you need to do everything you can to give good information in the student's hands so that they can learn from, from areas that they, they need to have a deeper understanding of. We use data in our, in our district to drive our decisions. And we have standardized exams that, that provide instantaneous data. But that's only one measure. We also need to, to use formative assessments from teachers and uh, summative assessments with teachers. So this is a, a, I'm going to put it right where it belongs at this point in time. This is a school issue, an administrative issue. We need to, and my expectation is, and, and I'm certainly not putting anybody at fault for the way I'm here. As a leader of a school, you need to set expectations for performance of your staff. And at times those expectations need to be reviewed. And, and if there, there are concerns about grading, et cetera, and we've had this conversation numerous times with uh, the middle school or high school. We need to sit down and, and, and develop those expectations and practices, to use a, a stronger word, that make sure that we ensure that our teachers are doing what's expected of them. We have a rigorous evaluation system that evaluates all aspects of the teaching. So I go back to the contract. This isn't contract. Professionals shouldn't have to rely on, on a step-by-step process and a written contract to do their job. That is not acceptable to me as a superintendent. So my recommendation after, after hearing this uh, is that I'd like the middle school principal, the high school principal, prime director of teaching and learning, as we steal, to sit down, utilize your school-based leadership team and, and dive into this and see exactly where you're at. Do an assessment. Get an idea of where you're at with, with grading and, and you know, the time it takes for returning assignments, et cetera. Uh, and also checking to ensure that, that your staff realizes that those assignments are not just for testing knowledge, they're for learning, student learning as well. It wouldn't be too much to ask that you develop a, a set of practices in your school than a collaborative fashion. And you know, having said that, uh, this needs to be done in a timely manner. It, it's hard for me to, to sit here this evening and, and have been a leader of this district for fourteen years and have been very specific in what I expect. And this is something that I expect. That this isn't up for negotiation. That this is about student learning and we're all here this evening because we support students. That's what our job is. Not negotiable. So I'm going to charge the, the three of you with that task. And I'm not expecting stringent timelines. I'm expecting a reasonable timeline. For example, if, if a teacher is, is collecting an essay or a writing assignment that is ten or fifteen pages long, we're not going to turn that around in two days, not with the case of all the hundred to one hundred and thirty students. But that's not reasonable. And if we do something that, that is too assertive, then we're not going to get the quality of assessments that we all expect to, to test student learning. So there's a fine balance here. And, and as a superintendent, I, I pride, I have a lot of pride in the school district and I have a lot of pride and respect for our staff. So I want to reiterate the fact that this isn't, in my opinion, this isn't widespread, but there's something that, that needs to be fixed. And I know the leadership team in each school, certainly I have confidence in them to be able to do that. So now it's a matter of uh, taking the information that we have, finding out exactly where you are. Do an OLYMPUS test within your schools. And from there you'll have direction in this as to, you know, what you need to do. We implemented Aspen in twenty, uh, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. And it was a huge change for our staff, but one of the reasons we implemented Aspen was to give our students an opportunity to see their progress throughout the term of the semester. So that they, they can become active participants of their own achievement. And in order for that to happen, Aspen needs to be updated in a, in a timely fashion so that our students have, have the marks to look at, to see where they are and calculate where they are. And, and that was one of the powerful aspects of Aspen, one of the reasons why we chose that, that program to use. So I think we, we really need to sit back and evaluate what we're doing. I mean, we, we spent a lot of time talking about multiple means of, of representation. In other words, multiple ways of, of presenting student learning. I think we've done quite well in our district in that area, but I see this as something that's pretty basic and, and we, we really need to to figure out what we need to do to, to make sure that we're supporting our students as much as possible with reasonable expectation. And once that's done, uh, I'll be looking for a copy in the discussion. And it's up to the school committee uh, desires if they want you to come back and present uh, the practices that you've developed in, in your schools. But I also would like consistency in grade six through twelve.
Thank you very, thank you very much for that. You know, as one member of the school committee, I don't know that we need a formal presentation on the topic, but if you could certainly share the results of um, the work that's going to be put into this, that would be wonderful. This was such a good example of like open government. Uh, now, sort of a feel-good moment for uh, citizens. So thank you for offering that concern. Thank you for your response. We have a path going forward to um, get better as a district. Yeah.
Can we ask for um, us to shoot for maybe the last meeting in February? To have a, a, at least a hours this coming along?
We, we can do an update, uh, un- until they, and I don't think it's going to take them very long to get a, a reading of of where they're at, because I know the administration's very involved in, in their schools. I, I think that's fine. Uh, I think the tricky part, not the tricky part, I think they're going to have to establish is how are they going to go about uh, creating a collaborative opportunity to work with their, their educators to develop their practices? So that's fair. I mean, from my point of view, the sooner we have this uh, resolved, the the more time we can spend on student learning and, and having that information that, that uh, we all need to uh, feel good about what our students are learning in our classrooms. Definitely reasonable.
Thank you very much for that response. And I'm happy that this is being taken so seriously.
You're welcome.
I'm so. An update about a month from now. Sure. Great. Awesome. Thanks a lot. And thank you.
Yeah, thank you. As always, like, I love how responsive the administration is. Um, yeah, I look forward to hearing what, what comes of it. What, and what date is that specifically? Like the last meeting and dinner? I'd love to come.
Twenty seven.
For myself.
So. And I guess in, in all fairness, certainly don't have to say anything, principals or director of teaching and learning, but if you would like to, then we're certainly open to your comments.
Well, I think um, Jenny already knows how I feel because we've been talking about this issue um, pretty actively since November. Um, that in, in the school council, and that was very good. In the school council, and then we had a follow-up meeting just one-on-one afterward. So I think it's very clear, she said it well, in terms of expectations, setting expectations for timely return of work, providing frequent feedback, you can get consistent communication post the upgrades. It really is can be distilled down. It's a very simple, clear message. It's professional expectation for, for our staff. You know, and uh, I think what we have to do, when I can talk to, had a chance for Jason and I remember Kelly uh, this afternoon uh, to discuss the concerns as well. And sort of start to pre-plan a response a- after the presentation, it's not even a comment. And I think one of the key things is Kelly sort of reiterated some things that we discussed in um, in the meeting, and one of the clear things was to really do an assessment of just how widespread this issue is. Get a sense of how, you know, is it, is it pervasive throughout six to twelve or is it a teacher side of there? Because the individual teachers, you know, they, they can, they can be responsive to professional feedback and saying, this is a problem. This is causing unnecessary stress and, you know, and we, and it's not really in line with our expectations for professional formative feedback and progress monitoring of student, you know, performance. Both it's feedback for the student, we look at their grades in Aspen, but it's also, and their return at work, but it's also feedback and information for parents to be updated on. So we want to be really responsive to this. Um, I will, I will get into detail, but Jenny knows how I feel about this because we've had a lot, a lot of conversations, including even last night, we talked on the phone. So, you know, we're well aware of the concerns and I, I think the key thing for us though is to get, you know, both Jason and I, like the six to twelve, is really to get a handle on what are the teachers' thoughts about the practices on this? What are, what are they doing? Because we might get a response that it's a teacher here and there that needs that feedback and not widespread. And I think that's reasonable for February for us to update you on it, our twenty seven, in terms of, we can also have draft plans for, you know, to get a sense of what the plans would be from the comments. It's just responding to Jenny's concerns and the ones I just, I'm not repeating today, but just now. But I think they, in terms of, of this, it, it's fair to give an update. We do have February break, so I want to be mindful of other competing commitments that we have between now and that time to get, you know, just to, we have formative actual evaluations to do in our buildings for teachers that are coming due at the end of this month, beginning of February. So we'll be providing timely feedback. We want to make sure we're modeling that too. So we want to, you know, look ourselves in the mirror and say, how can we get better at this too? Make sure that we're being timely. Um, so, and I think that was one of the comments you had. So I think, you know, in the school council, we, Jenny had said, you know, teachers have expectations for the students to return work by deadlines and that kind of thing. And, you know, and we all want to be good role models for that, both as an administration and as faculty. We do have tremendous confidence and respect for our faculty, whether it's any faculty else, I'll speak for the, for the, I'll repeat with the superintendent said district-wide. But we do want to dig into this and see just what's going on and make sure the response to it. Because it is all about professionalism and just being, you know, really good teachers in terms of assessment and grades. So we'll, we'll get on it. And uh, you know, I, I, you can have confidence that we'll do it.
I, I give one more um, comment slash question about this. It, it, this may be an opportunity for some professional development down the road when there's, you know, capacity in the calendar for a new topic, but you know, the, just the instructional strategies, you know, are they focused, like you said, on um, you, you know, following the progression of learning and, and um, monitoring that through formative assessments and check-ins? Or are, is this teaching content with uh, quizzes that don't serve to inform instruction, but just serve as a grade in a grade book? You know, so it's a, it's kind of a different, it's, it's the, the tension between traditional styles of teaching versus more innovative um, like inquiry-based learning where, you know, you can get the pulse on how much a student understands by circulating around the room and listening to conversations and you can, you can see who's with you and who may be lagging behind, like who you may need to check in with to support without having to grade a paper, you know? And so, you know, if, if teachers could get um, more aligned with those kinds of instructional strategies, it actually reduces the load of grading that they need to do because they're more in touch with the students in the moment. So.
I appreciate that. I, I'm mindful of the time, but I, I'll just respond. One of the, your, your comment is timed because tomorrow, the team from the high school, I mean, middle school assistant principal is joining us. We're going to be talking about assessment for the portrait of a learner, why? So, you know, we're going to be talking specifically about that six to twelve. How do we assess and report out on the progress students are having with those competency skills that we need? the progress students are having with those competency skills that we, we presented on in a previous school committee meeting? So we're going to take that in a different direction, but in general, we can also, we'll be together tomorrow, we can talk about assessment practices. One of our school improvement goals that's been in the high school's school improvement plan has been to provide professional development, specifically best practices and assessment grading. It continues to get punted down the road and displaced by other things such as preparing for accreditation, but now it's going to be implemented into our re-accreditation process. So it's timely, I think in earnest, you're probably able to really commit to this, uh, professional development through best practices and assessment and grading. Perhaps it could be a shared goal six to twelve rather than just at high school, in our school improvement plan, that you're part of those school improvement goals at the school council. So we do present to you as a school, we are school improvement goals, and one of them would be, you know, really a dedicated effort, uh, starting next school, but maybe towards the end of the school year. We have, we have initiated, we've had things each year, even clearly last May, we had one of the early release days we dedicated to assessment practices. Um, but I think we really make a strong commitment to that in our, in our school-based professional development days for the next school year. And we'll be really responsive to this, and we'll take it beyond, thi- this is clear and reasonable and relatively simple in terms of responding to them, this, this, this doesn't require professional development days, it's uncomplicated, this is just decent, solid professional practice, what you've talked about tonight. But what I'm talking, what you're talking about is more expansive and planning for the future.
Yes.
I think there's, there's definitely room for growth for us there, especially with the vision of a graduate now called Portrait of a Learner.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks, Joe. Very good, you're good?
We're good.
One other thing, and, and it resonated with me, somebody said zeros, is that correct?
Said what?
Zeros. I might have said zeros.
Um, just to comment, I am not a fan, never have been, a fan of giving zeros. If an assignment is not handed in, even incomplete, but definitely not a zero, so administration, um, if this is happening in your schools, uh, please get rid of it. Have this conversation.
Tell them you told us.
Yeah, those of you who have been with me for a number of years know how I feel, it's very strong feeling, but I don't know how you expect to motivate somebody if you're giving a zero. This doesn't make sense.
We did talk about that assessment, so he knows what I'm talking about.
In, in that, in that example, I believe it was an assignment that was due that was not handed in on, that was not handed in, marked as a zero, and then subsequently been handed in for questioning, how do you have a zero on this still anyways?
I think there's a, there's a better way to do it.
Sometimes zeros are places to be.
Place holder?
It, it's, that's exact, it, it is, it's like, you have an, until that, until you turn that in, the teacher's sending a student a message, but the parent, then it has to be explained by the student to the parent, and the parent has to believe the student at the time, this is
Sure.
This is questionable, what do you mean, why do you have zeros? Well, the teacher hasn't got around to grading it, or I haven't submitted it yet, so there's a variety of things, but we will put that absolutely on our agenda with the staff to address and say, how do we, how do we, you know, mitigate and maybe just totally remove this unnecessary apprehension around grading when it comes to zeros, it's confusion. What we need to bring is clarity around the whole issue, because this is a really, these are really simple, again, this to be somewhat repetitive, really simple, reasonable request.
And we, we spent
Important thing to bring up.
Yeah, we spent a lot of time, I'm sorry, we spent a lot of time, um, creating strategies to help students, um, have a better attendance record at school. I don't know how giving a student a zero is a placeholder, it's, it's productive, it's counterproductive, so please take care of that, if it's happening, so.
That's what, we can report up the feedback, we'll assess that and report it out to school, they will learn about that at the February twenty seventh, please.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Seeing no one else with a hand up, we'll close our first opportunity for interested citizens, and we'll move on to recognition. So, uh, Harish Ganesh will provide a, uh, report for other events at each school.
Sure. Um, good evening, everybody, a few updates from each of the schools. Uh, Shaker Lane last Thursday held a January committee meeting, and they partnered with the Super Bowl for Caring, and they'll be collecting soup cans and other canned goods to collect five, to donate to Loews and Fishes, and their goal is to collect five hundred cans before February seventh. Um, the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five pre-kindergarten registration for community peers is open, it's open till next Friday. And, uh, the lottery for students to attend the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school year is uh, until Friday, it's on Friday, February seventh at ten AM. Um, for Russell Street, their online store is closing tomorrow, and ten percent of all sales come back to the school, um, but it'll be reinvested. Um, the fifth grades, the fifth graders are doing their battlefield day tomorrow, um, they're presenting their, uh, models of Civil War battles. And they wanted to thank the cast of Newsies Junior from the middle school for coming to, uh, Russell Street and, uh, performing. For the middle school, opening night for Newsies Junior is tomorrow, seven PM, so if you'd like to see it, it's available. Math testing, a form of standardized testing, is next Wednesday on January twenty-ninth. And the eighth graders are going on a field trip to Gillette Stadium on Friday the thirty-first. And from the high school, our semester ends tomorrow, so we'll start our second semester. Um, students completed the stamp exam last week for, uh, obtaining the sealed Bible literacy on their diplomas. And the National Honor Society is participating in a Rise Against Hunger packaging event, and the Shover Regional High School on February eighth.
Not in the town newsletter, February, yeah.
Questions for Harish? Awesome, thank you so much, is there any other recognition to be recognized this evening?
Sure, I have a, a couple. Excuse me, uh, this week I had the, the opportunity to get out of my office and spend a few hours at Russell Street School, it's always a pleasure to spend time in our schools. And, uh, three hours gave me the opportunity to visit virtually every classroom and talk to all educators, and pretty all of the staff. Uh, what was nice about that day is some of our students were writing, uh, a math assessment, so I had an opportunity to talk to teachers and ask them about the new resources that we're implementing at the elementary level into math and, and wisdom. And I'm just so impressed with our, with our elementary teachers' dedication and, and commitment to, um, fidelity in implementing these resources. It's a heavy lift. I mean, teaching without implementation of, of new resources, uh, takes a lot of time and effort, but to add two new resources that require, uh, reflection or, or rethinking, and sometimes a mindset change of how you do business is, is such a, such a heavy unanimously, I, I, I don't, I don't have any teacher that that had reservations about the two different resources, they're getting a little tired at times. But they're committed, they realize that, that these resources are going to make a difference. They'll make the difference in, in how much our students learn, how they apply previous learning to, to new learning. How they incorporate interdisciplinary opportunities into ELA, for example, and that's so powerful, and I've talked to you about this before at Shaker Lane. So they, they are on board. And, and they just continue to need our, our support and, and, and understanding and and providing what they need to, to be successful, so we brought in consultants who, who, um, are, are working with our staff, we've we've stipend out, uh, leaders both in, into math and, and wisdom within our, our school system so that they can spend the extra time at their peers and, and help of implementing some the new resources, new materials, new assessments, et cetera. Uh, we have worked hard throughout the years to, to find a recipe that we feel works. And, and that certainly isn't implementing in one year and then walking away. To do that, the chances of success are minimal. This is our third year implementing into math, and this year we were focusing on, um, assessments, which we just talked about. And we, we brought a consultant in, um, we have our, um, curriculum leaders that are, are working with our staff, and, and it's working out quite well, and I attended the sessions we had on assessment. And it's a, it's a huge shift to rely more heavily on computerized assessments. But it's important to have good information so that we can assess the, you know, whether the programs make a difference if you expect it to be. And there needs to be a balance between assessments that are, that are formative and, and assessments that, for example, in mathematics, uh, if you taught math, or if you remember when you were in math, teachers always wanted you to show your, show your work, which is part of the process, it's important. So we spent a, a number of hours, two sessions, uh, with our staff, because they were trying to, to come to terms with what was right. And in the end, they really felt strongly that, uh, we need to continue with those assessments, but augment them with the opportunity to show, show their work, students show their work during the assessment, so spend that time going through that, so. But just a, just a signal of, of typical growing pains that could happen when you're introducing new resources, so. Again, I'm so, I'm so proud of our elementary teachers and, and kudos to them for, for, um, their commitment to, to forge ahead and, and, and do what they feel is going to make a difference in their students' lives. And I have to give a shout out to Mrs. Steele, our director of teaching and learning, who, uh, is, uh, obviously heading the implementation process, and Mrs. Steele is a really wonderful gentleman, so thank you. Uh, my second recognition is we were fortunate to partner with LFD, so I used to say LP, it's nice to say LFD if you're not, yeah. A little too far apart. Uh, and training our staff with, uh, in CPR and ADD. And it was really nice, we offered two sessions, and I attended the one last night. And I'm a, I'm a firm advocate of, of everybody being trained in CPR, and, and ADD is, is, is a very valuable tool to, to have as well, and I know it's, it's hard for people to find the time, but the more people that we have trained in our community and beyond, the more successful we will be if, if somebody has an emergency and, and needs CPR. The, time is of essence, and if you don't really know what you're doing and you're fumbling around, I mean, two minutes is a lot of time before you start CPR. So it's, it's valuable. Uh, I'd encourage everybody who listens to our school committee meetings to, to, uh, think about that and, and and also, we, we went through training, um, children as well, which is equally important. So it's just nice to have that, that strong partnership, uh, with the Rupson Fire Department, and, and you know, we intend to, to continue to do that year by year. I, sometimes I like sharing stories in my career, but I'm going to share this one. When I was a principal of an elementary school a number of years ago, uh, all of my staff were trained in, in CPR, we really didn't use ADDs at that time, it was more paramedic. And we had a situation where we had a student on the playground that was, uh, running around, ran into a soccer post, uh, went unconscious and stopped reading. We were very fortunate to have people trained and were able to resuscitate this young boy. And, uh, it was a success story. And to this day, I often wonder what would have happened if we didn't have training? So to me, it's, it's somewhat personal because I, I had that experience that was really negative and traumatic, and it turned out to be positive. You're not going to find anybody as, as, um, strong as I am, an advocate of CPR training. And, and Dorothy, I want to thank her for, uh, being my partner. And, uh, we worked out well, we saved our mannequin. And I'm even, even more pleased that I'm here today and not in another universe, because Dorothy was in charge of the ADD when, and she had the paddles on and I was performing CPR, so I'm glad she pushed the right button at the right time. So thanks for that, Dorothy.
You're welcome.
All right. Uh, the last one is, we all know, uh, LMSS is playing this, this weekend, uh, and it's, uh, Newsies Junior, uh, Friday night at seven, Saturday at two, and Sunday at two. If you have some time this weekend, uh, please come out and support our LMSS drama club, uh. And your wonderful job, the kids are, are thrilled to be able to perform on stage, and, and our drama program, uh, continues to grow and, and, uh, you know, it's, it's just really nice to see our students. If you're free, please check it out. That's it.
Thank you.
Great, so much. All right, we have two presentations scheduled for this evening, the first of which is, uh, Portrait of a Learner presentation, general update. Steele, Director of Teaching and Learning. That'd be scheduled for ten minutes, but you can take as much as time as you need.
I'm learning, stay within my time, so someone's got the timer going?
Um, I won't do that.
Yeah. Happy to. Um, so happy to share an update on our district's Portrait of a Learner. Um, in all reality, I'm the spokesperson tonight, this is really shared work, um, amongst our admin team and all of our educators altogether, so I happen to be the person speaking, but it is everyone's work that I'm sharing about tonight. Um, so we know that we are living and learning and teaching in a ever-changing world and society, and so the idea of the Portrait of a Learner helps learner, excuse me, helps us to create a vision of what we want learning to be that matches for our students now and in the future for moving forward. And so, um, right off the bat, I think we need to thank John Clements and Mary Ann Moran, they are co-principals at Nittmuck Regional, and they came to our administrative retreat this summer and provided, uh, some learning for our, our admin team about the, the Portrait of a Learner. They have done significant work within their district, within their school, of what Portrait of a Learner means and their journey and experience, and they came and shared that with us and walked us through some of the exercises of how to implement a Portrait of a Learner and what that can look like, and so we want to acknowledge their work and efforts. Um, and also because you're going to see, we're not through our implementation, and so some of the things you're going to see are examples from Nittmuck that we're using as models for moving forward. So after this learning, um, that happened in August of this past summer, we then created a timeline of how we wanted to draft our own, um, Portrait of a Learner, and you see that timeline here. And as of right now, we are aligned with our timeline, so we're in that phase two, um, process. But we also want to do the, give this due credit and give it the time that it needs, and so we'll adapt as we see fit with regards to the timeline. The Portrait of a Learner really answers the question that's on the next slide. And that question is, what are the skills, knowledge, and dispositions that learners need to be successful in a rapidly changing, increasingly diverse and inter- interconnected world? And so it is a shift of looking at what, what do our students need right now, but also what are they going to need in the future? Knowing that things change daily, hourly, and sometimes minute by minute. There are the four phases of implementation of a Portrait of a Learner. We have completed that first phase of Find True North, and so I'll share with you in just a moment of what that phase looked like for us, what we did and what we accomplished. We are currently in the define the skills phase, that second phase. Um, this takes a bit of time to get through, and so we're just kind of toward the beginning of this phase. And then we hope to get to the magnify the moments and measure what matters by the end of this academic school year, so we have a draft of something to work with for moving forward. And those are stages, since we're not in it yet, I'll share what we ideally want to be able to do, um, and what we have as models to do during those times. So on the next slide, we see the Find the True North, and this is the first phase, and in this phase of implementation, we really establish a shared compass for teaching and learning that helps our students to learn and to grow. What I appreciate, um, that they made clear was this idea of a compass over a map, right, so a map is very defined, it's very detailed, there are pathways on the map, it's kind of laid out for you, whereas the compass is a tool that you can be creative and you can create your own pathway to get to where you're going, right? And so we're finding our true north, we're finding really what, what our home base, what we want to be aspirationally. This, for this phase, we did a couple of different activities, um, we primed our brains for discussions on what our students will need, um, to know in potential future jobs, like, for example, an AI ethics officer, um, or a neuro implant technician, for example, of future jobs, right, that may exist at some point, um, in the near or maybe distant future. And so talking about what skills are those individuals going to need? And some of the skills are skills that we all needed way back when, and we still continue to need to this day, right? Um, and so that brought us to this idea of talking about our beliefs of learning. And so this is when we pulled out our strategic plan, and we looked at on page one, what are the LPS beliefs of learning, right? And looking at these, we were then able to, the beliefs are very aspirational, right? So what does that mean, what does that look like in practice? And so then we started talking about, well, what is learning? And what is learning not, right? And so we were able to create a definition of what learning is and what learning is not based on what the skills that we had talked about, right, and the ideas of things that our students will need. The ideas of things that our students will need and the beliefs that our system already holds true. And so with that, we created our district's definition of learning that you see, thank you, on this slide here. Each school participated in coming up with this definition of learning. So all four schools did during staff meetings, during time together, the activity, having conversations of what's, what is learning? What does it look like? What is learning not? What should it not look like? And so all four schools had notes of definition of what learning is and what it is not. And so we, as an admin team, pulled all of those notes together. And interestingly, saw a lot of similarities that spanned from Shaker Lane all the way up through the high school. There are skills that our kids are developing and creating at Shaker Lane that they need and need to enhance all the way up through high school and beyond. And so with all of those notes, we were able to craft the definition of learning. Needless to say, it was done on a shared Google Doc, and so there was a lot of typing and retyping and typing over, and occasionally telling each other to stop typing, that we needed to pause. And so this really was, has that, the culmination of that Phase One was the creation of this definition of learning. And so we're excited to be able to share this out publicly and share it with our staff to be able to see that everyone's contribution to this. So from here, with the definition, we were then able, again, we go from beliefs, which is really aspirational, to the definition of learning, which is starting to come a little less aspirational, it's starting to come a little bit more concrete, to then jumping into Phase Two, which is defining the skills. So now we're looking at really being a lot clearer and concrete with what are the things that we're attaching to our definition of learning and to our beliefs. And so in this phase, we are currently working collaboratively to determine the competencies and the skills that we want in our own Portrait of a Learner. And so this, and we started this, and the admin team went through this during our summer retreat. And our staffs are now going through it together as a whole staff. We did an activity of back in my day and ten years from now, and some of the, we passed around pictures. And there are pictures of a rotary phone, for example, or a picture of like a computer screen with WWW, right? So things that we have seen evolve over the past few years or decades, or in some cases even months, right? With AI. And so we discussed the evolution of these things and how the evolution of those things had an impact on us. And again, some of the skill set that we needed to use the rotary phone, you still need now to use a phone, even though we may not be using that rotary piece anymore, right? So while our things and our technology may change and may update, the competencies and skills really can continue to be beneficial as we continue to move forward. And in this space, we're really tapping into what the high school worked on last year. And you'll see, John mentioned it just a few minutes ago. These are the two visuals of the vision of a graduate that John presented last year. They had this work started and going, and so we are now leaning on that work and putting it forth to see, does this make sense? Is this still where we want to be going district-wide? And so we're using the six competency areas that the high school created that are listed there in the bottom right picture. So we have Effective Communicator, Critical Thinker, Skillful Collaborator, Health and Wellness, Mindful Learner, and Engaged Citizen. And determining, are those the right competencies that we want? And what are the skill sets that fall within each of those competencies that we want our students to really work on and enhance and build throughout their career in LPS? And this is where we will start to kind of see slight differences, particularly in wording with regards to what are the skills? Because something that's worded for a high school student may not be worded properly for a student at Russell Street or at Shaker Lane or the middle school. And so this is where we start to have the ideas, a shared idea, but the actual wording and wordsmithing might start to look a little bit different. So as I said, we're in this phase right now. Once we move on from this phase and we are able to have our skills and our competencies defined, we will then look at magnifying the moments. And this part is really the intersection of the Portrait of a Learner and the curriculum, so where kind of the rubber meets the road, right? And so we're going to consider the teaching and what teaching and learning looks like at their best. And so this entails looking at what we already have in place. We're not starting from zero. We're starting with some really good things already in place. And so we are going to look at what's already in place and what can we magnify? What can we highlight as an experience, a learning experience that a student can build upon their skills and competencies as they continue to grow through LPS? Our admin team, again, we're, our admin team did a little exercise on this, but we're not here as a full district yet. But our admin team over the summer had, just very quickly, were able to come up with some ideas of such moments, such as for example, the district-wide band concert, the Can Do Challenges, the Playbook Initiative, Tiger Tech. So there's a lot of things already in place, there's a lot of learning experiences already in place that can help our students continue to build their competencies and their skill set. And so this picture that you see here is from Nittmuck. So they were able to create a roadmap of potential options of learning experiences that students will hit upon. And this is just nine through twelve, so this is just their high school, of different learning experiences that in which students are able to show their skill sets in particular competencies. So they're able to say, I was an innovator in this experience because, and then they're able to go in that way. So once we have the magnifying the moments, we then go into the fourth phase, which is measure what matters. And so in this phase, we're revisiting our true north, right? Are we staying consistent with what we wanted that aspirational piece to look like? And ensuring that however we assess, or we've done a lot of talking of actually having it be reflections aligned with our beliefs as a district and our definition of learning. And so this is when we're going to consider how we provide the feedback, what that looks like, what do we define as success, right? What do students define as success? What does that look like? One thing that we as an admin team really liked and admired from the work that Nittmuck did is that they created portraits of learner scholar profiles. And this is where the students actually created a one-pager, and they identified the competency that for them stuck out to them the most. So the Effective Communicator, the Innovator. And they were able to say, I am able to demonstrate this competency by doing these things. And they were able to demonstrate that by different learning experiences that they had gone through throughout their years within the school that they were in. And so that was something that for us felt very authentic and really allows the student to self-identify, right? We do a lot of, wow, you're, you're being a great creative thinker right now. But let's have the student actually say, wow, I really thought creatively on that. So it's, that's why we're considering reflections, right? This picture here is what Nittmuck has created with regards to what they measure. And like I said, as opposed to an assessment, which at times we tend to think of, right, as the quizzes, the tests, that type of thing. We're looking at reflections and doing, I can see this. And so the students are able to say, I can do this, or I can do this sometimes, right? Being able to give that autonomy to the student to be able to determine how they themselves are doing. So again, we're not at this point yet. This is aspirationally where we want to go, and ideally by the end of the school year, this year, we have something that's working in progress that we can kind of refine as we continue to.
Questions for Ms. Steele?
This is such amazing work that you guys are doing, like really, I really appreciate the time and effort that you guys are putting into this. I don't know how you're finding the time to do it. Honestly, it seems like such a deep dive for you guys to be so committed to. And really just, it's such a contribution to our town and our school district, not just now or when you guys completed, but I see it as such an amazing framework for our school and our community for, it could be decades, that this is such a good, it's not so specific, it's not like that roadmap that as the world changes, it becomes something that's not usable, but it's such a good framework for us that's always going to be applicable. So I really do applaud you guys. This is one of those like legacy projects that I think will really be so impactful. So I appreciate your time and you've been into doing it. This is great work.
Thank you. I will pass that along to the team.
Please go.
Yeah, I echoed that too, and I think, so you had said the definition of learning is the part that you all have done the rest of your work on. This is incredible and really inspiring to read and inspiring to know that sort of the district is taking this as a true north, as you said, as a vision statement to then sort of think about assessment and everything. And the thing that I'm thinking about, and I saw it in so many multiple places here, but I think especially just in the context of the world we live in and the context of the world that these students are going into especially, this idea of like a learner in humility and that being curious, sometimes curiosity is thought of as asking questions, but the answer has to be within this box. But when we really, I think, need to push to think about curiosity, as I am open to having whatever I previously thought being completely questioned and a completely different perspective. And so somewhere just thinking about like what it means to be a curious learner, that there's like an element of humility in that, I guess, was something that like I was thinking, and it was inspired in that thought and everything that you all had with it, so.
Yeah, thank you. We have recently, well, within the past year, we've done some learning. And one thing that I think, what you just said connects me back to that, was the statement of, I used to think this. I now think this. And the part that, I think we've all heard that, right, and the part that was nude, at least to me in that, in that experience, was that that, the sentence isn't over yet. What goes on is, and that may continue to change, right? And I think that's the key, is like, and that's why this is a continuous journey, not necessarily a roadmap with a destination.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I'm so excited to hear about this project. I was, I went to a session at the Mass Mass Conference, and who was that, remember? Dyten Rehoboth is also, they went through their whole process, and it's a very similar process, which is telling me that this is out there for districts to partake and so on. And all the parts that excited me in that presentation are the things that you've articulated. So I'm really glad that that's the direction we're going in. I was thinking, you know, in your statement about what is a learner, it made me also think of the teachers, that teachers should be considered as lifelong learners as well. They're not just the dispensers of knowledge. So I just wanted to clarify, are they sort of part of the whole vision as well?
Yeah, I think that's a really good, so trying to, and that's something I've been very aware of personally, of, right, using educator and learners, because we also are learners in this process, right? And our students have a lot to teach us. And so I think it's something to be very aware of, that when we say the word learners, we're very intentional that there's no age to what that actually means.
And I think it's a nice way too to get buy-in from teachers when this gets to this implementation stage. You know, to keep it from feeling like a top-down thing, you know, with and the messaging is that, you know, we're all learners, you know, admin, teachers, students, everybody, school committee, we're all learners. And the other thing I was really excited to hear about, that you're articulating this by grade span, so it's, you know, it's a district vision, but what does it look like at high school, middle school, elementary? Because that will make the vision easier to follow. And the other thing I was excited to hear about is that you're aligning this to the strategic plan because that will just give it so much coherence and, you know, keep us all pulling in the same direction. And, you know, when this is all said and done and ready to roll out, you know, the messaging can be really powerful because it's pulling together so many different stakeholders, so. And I just wanted to ask, so the, your team that's working on it, so it's admin from different schools? Do you have teachers working on it, students, or is it mostly admin?
So it's admin and all staff. And so what's happening is that admin have kind of previewed activities based on the summer learning. And then we've laid out a timeline for admin. So right now, it's until mid-February that the expectation is that then at our next AC meeting or when our admin council comes together to meet, they're coming with the evidence, the facts of the discussion at their school. And so all staff already have participated. So staff voice is in that definition of learning, of what that means. And so it's, I think, because what you said, top-down, is not an effective way necessarily to do a lot of things. And this is one of those items that we felt really strongly, and I think our admin team was very excited. A highlight of our summer retreat was this experience of learning this together, knowing that we can go back to the table and everyone has a voice at it.
This is, this is really excellent, and I just, I love the potential of this as a community builder, to really build our, our culture here in Littleton Public Schools. Very excited, thank you.
Definition of learning, it really looks good, but what a process it was. We brought all of the feedback from the schools and then that allowed us to start to write the language. And then we, we dared to create a Google Doc and have fifteen people writing at the same time.
So annoying. It jumps out.
But now we know how our students feel when they do it, they expect them to do it.
So we took care of them, we separated it. But it was, you know, everybody has different writing styles and it was just, it was so nice when this came together because it was a long document at first. Our goal was to have a succinct document that was, you know, easy to read and empowering. I think we succeeded in that. Thank you so much. Good, all right. Presentation number two, Title Nine Update Regarding Recent Changes. Welcome, Mrs. Steele.
Shifting gears. I do want to say though, before, before I get started, as being a member of the admin council and being at the retreat and being at the admin council meetings where we kind of went through this process, it really did for me resonate that how beautiful the process of learning is, how messy it can be, how wonderful it can be. But when you have that underpinning of that, that safety among the strong administrative team that we have, it's that we're able to kind of actualize that and, you know, and really model the behavior that we expect to see from our students as well. So with that, I will give everybody a update to be always exciting and always changing the regulations. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you all tonight about the recent changes to the Title IX regulations that have been in the news and are important to understand as we move forward in supporting our students in maintaining a safe and equitable learning environment. Just to give you some background, Title IX of the 1972 Education Amendments to the Civil Rights Act, as we know it as Title IX, it's a federal law that was, that was passed in 1972 to prohibit discrimination based on sex in educational programs and activities. So it's had a profound impact on ensuring that students of all genders have equal access to educational opportunities. Over the years, the law's been updated to address a range of issues from athletics to sexual harassment and beyond. So on January ninth, 2025, the United States District Court for Eastern Kentucky issued a decision striking down the 2024 Title IX Amendments. In the decision, the district court held that the Department of the US Department of Education exceeded its authority when it expanded Title IX to prohibit discrimination on the basis of gender identity. So while there were parts of the 2024 Title IX Amendments that were not issued in the case, they were not contested, such as the inclusion of parent, family, and marital status for pregnancy-related conditions, the court held that the issues raised in the case fatally tainted the 2024 amendments as a whole, and the 2024 amendments are in doubt, and they are set aside in their entirety. So this federal court decision applies nationwide. Therefore, school districts must now revert back to ensuring compliance with the previous 2020 amendments to Title IX and using the Title IX grievance procedures and forms that were in effect prior to August first of 2024. So for that reason, the districts were reviewing our grievance procedures, but we've already begun to implement the Title IX grievance procedures that we had in place prior to August first, 2024. So the interpretation of the change is ongoing, and the US Department of Education has not issued any guidance in writing as of this time, but we do not anticipate that the decision is going to be appealed. So it's important to note that gender identity remains a protected class under Massachusetts law. And then despite the court decision on January ninth, staff and students continue to be protected from discrimination and harassment based on gender identity in our public schools. It's also important to recognize that these updates are not about changing our commitment to preventing discrimination and harassment in any form. Rather, they reflect our response to the requirements of the law and an ongoing dialogue about how best to support students involved in a situation while also providing the necessary protections and resources to those who need them most. So I want to just reassure the community that while these changes are notable, our district is, is going to continue to prioritize the safety and well-being of all students, ensuring that they're treated with respect and dignity. We'll continue to educate our students and staff about their rights and responsibilities under Title IX and state laws that protect our children from discrimination. and state laws that protect our children from discrimination. And we'll make sure that anyone that experiences discrimination or harassment has the support that they need. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone has.
I just have a clarifying question. So the, um, does the state law that protects gender identity supersede the federal law? I mean, because our law is stronger. If we follow that law, does it really not, do these changes at the federal level?
I would caution with using the, the word supersede or, um, or, or stronger. Um, but you know, what I, what I'm saying is that we do still have a Massachusetts, a Massachusetts state law that does protect um, gender identity and that does, that is reflected in, um, in what we do.
So if we follow the stronger state law, then the federal law has less impact on our, how the things are rolled out here?
It, it really doesn't have any impact at this point in time. And, and that's something, uh, believe me, lawyers are, uh, working twenty-four seven. Should I figure all this out? But I mean, federal laws are, are tied to dollars that states receive. We don't know what that means yet.
So we, so I, I think maybe to help kind of clarify that, that distinction. So, so Title IX federal law, we have our civil rights procedures that protect all protected classes, which under Massachusetts law includes, um, gender identity. So while we have a set of procedures that we follow relevant to Title IX, we have a set of procedures that we fall, that we follow, um, consider it to non-Title IX claims, which would fall under our civil rights procedures.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. This is specific to.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this up and thank you for continuing to stand up and take care of students, staff, all of, all people in our community. Everybody deserves to be treated with dignity and care. And nobody deserves to be made to feel unsafe or un, un, or not as equal.
I couldn't agree more.
I appreciate you standing up to that and right there beside.
Good. Thanks so much.
And our policy doesn't need to be updated because our policy is already.
In case that's a question.
But I, I reserve the right to, if that should change, um, um, I'll keep everyone updated.
We do.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We've got, uh, one item of new business gathered for this evening, which is the discussion regarding just for your twenty-six budget presentation in place on January twenty-eighth. It's like Tuesday, um, the joint meeting between the select board, the finance committee and the school committee. So, um, I'll offer that, um, we're being asked, uh, as chair of the school committee, I'm being asked certainly we welcome your participation and presence at the meeting. Uh, we're scheduled for the six-thirty time slot on Tuesday. Present our, uh, proposed for the year twenty-six budget. For the select board of the finance committees, opportunity for us to uh, detail the, uh, heavy lifting done by superintendent, uh, Kelly Glenn, chief business manager, Steve Mark, Janine, myself, and many, many others that have put a number of hours in getting our budget in a, uh, presentable format, but that we feel, uh, strongly achieves um, our desire to provide a high-quality product for our students going forward next year. And also a budget that we believe the town, uh, and work with meets the town's expectations for where our question be. So I'm know, uh, you folks can, can make it. You won't necessarily have a, a speaking role. Um, but questions may be asked of the school committee if you have, um, comment or would like to participate, you are certainly more than welcome. But I will be there. Kelly will be there. Steve will be there. Janine will be there as well.
Is this the meeting that was previously on the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Yeah, twenty-seventh keeps coming up and, and I think it's, I think that's just a typo. I think I saw it again somewhere else. And I'm like, no, no, it's the twenty-eighth. It's, it's, it's a Tuesday night and the Tuesday is twenty-eight.
So the select board typically meets on Mondays.
Yeah.
And we were asked initially to come on the twenty-seventh to just discuss what's happening at the school committee level. Um, and then they rolled us forward and then this is an invite for our specific budget presentation. So we can take the twenty-seventh off and this is, this becomes, I'm sorry that it needs to keep jumping around.
No.
But this is our official invite and.
The twenty-eighth at what time? Are we on?
Six thirty.
Six thirty, right?
Six thirty is our time slot.
And this is, um, at eleven.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I can do Tuesday. I had Monday. I'm like.
Well, you now have Monday back.
Well, I'm free on Monday.
No, we won't need a quorum. We're not, um, deliberating. We're not voting. We're not, we're simply presenting the work that's been done so far. Um, we will then receive feedback. And then at our meeting, I'm thinking it's March thirteenth. Um, Janine and I will present our, the formal budget request to the school committee. At that meeting, we will need a quorum because we will vote through, um, the budget and then the whole entire town will hopefully vote through, um, everybody's budget. So it can be.
We know in town meetings, yeah.
Not sure.
Yeah.
Is this, this will be special.
Uh, this is regular time meeting.
Regular town meetings in the, in the spring and special town meetings again.
Oh, correct.
Sorry. Okay. Thanks. At least I knew there was one of each.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have it on my calendar as well.
I'm sure Diane.
So I'll, I'll cover a couple additional talking points now since we're, the budgets of community we asked to present, we're kind of on the topic. Um, Janine, Kelly, Steve and myself, Matt, who was that?
Two, two days ago?
Tuesday. Tuesday morning spent two hours going through, um, a big chunk of the budget. And I'm sure there were hours and hours and hours that, um, were dedicated to the budget on, um, let's see if Mark and Kelly made it back through together. So with a very successful meeting, we feel like, uh, we're near, near final draft of where we need to be. Um, Janine and I then had a chance to sit with uh, finance, finance committee chair, kind of go through it, see the peak, see what, um, questions they might have. So my anticipation is that, um, our meeting on the twentieth, we present, fingers crossed, we'll go pretty smooth. There's no, be no surprises there. And, um, I want to thank Kelly, Steve and Janine for, for the work that's been going on as we prepared for, um, a presentation on the twenty-eighth, then the presentation that will make to the school committee, uh, first day of March. Steve or Kelly, anything to add on that topic?
No, thank you.
Okay. Janine, I can cover all that.
Yep. That covers everything.
Good. So our second opportunity for citizens.
Can I just say a couple of things?
You may, you may. You may return to the microphone.
Right. I love to get.
Should probably be a separate topic, but we'll.
It will, no, it will be Jenny Boyer, A T Foxborough. Um, I, I believe strongly in also giving positive feedback and not just bringing in negative. So sitting in this meeting tonight and hearing all these presentations, like as a member of the community, the only one in this room right now, um, I mean, no, it's bad. Get up here. Like, I just want to say thank you to everyone like that works in the school and also to all of you for the time that it takes to, to make sure that all of these things are happening. Um, one thing in particular that came to mind in the portrait of a graduate or whatever it's called, I want to point out that, um, Dr. Harrington has brought that to our school council specifically. And he really did work to get the, the, um, input of the, of parents, teachers and students in that. So I just wanted like, I heard someone say it was like a community building thing. And he really has like taken the opportunity to do that. So I just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you for staying with me.
Yeah.
Typically we receive complaints and then they leave. Thank you for hanging around for the good stuff and we, we always like to hear positive feedback. So.
Time it wasn't to me. I think it's only respectful.
You received it to credibility. All right. We'll roll through our subcommittee reports, um, P M B C.
Who knows? Yeah.
Okay. You want to go through.
Shane Lane, um, I can give some updates and then Kelly can. Uh, updates I have are the meeting that we had with the select board on January thirteenth. So Justin, Elaine, Kelly, myself were there to represent the school committee. Um, basically it was a participation, kind of a collaboration between Kintom, select board and school committee on the upcoming project board of Shake Lane Building. Um, majority of the conversation, the topic was its effects on taxpayers. Um, a number of options that we have or will have in the future as the project progresses. Um, but it was basically just kind of peeling that, those layers of the onion back as to what it is we need to think about in the future, how we can work together um, in the future so that we can hopefully pass this through with the voters. Um, so we have a number of financial options that we have. We don't have any decisions that we can make just yet because it hasn't been voted through with the town. We still have a lot of, um, work to do. But, um, it was great for us all to kind of sit, I think, in the same room and talk and collaborate, talk about what, what issues we're going to find, what issues we're going to uncover with financing this. And also planning ahead so that we can figure out how to fund it the best way possible so that we can hopefully have the least impact on taxpayers. Um, because this is just something that we have to, have to get done. Um, but it's a high price tag for, for the town, um, and for voters. So I think all in all, it was a great, it was a great meeting. We uncovered what we needed to talk about and I don't know if there's anything into the future just yet. But there was, so there's no actual items to decisions to make just yet, but everyone's on board and supports it. So. Um, I missed anything?
Oh, I'll just add that, you know, information, financial information was shared at the special town meeting and those, uh, those calculations involved, uh, sort of very conservative numbers across multiple variables. Um, the effect on the taxpayer, uh, with the work that's been done and some potential strategies that we can implement, the numbers moving in the right direction for the taxpayer. So, um, again, as Stacy alluded to, nothing's, nothing's finalized. There's still a number of variables in place, but the goal is, I mean, everyone's in agreement that it would be wonderful to have a nice new school. And it's certainly, um, more, you know, it's a need and not necessarily one. Um, but we, all three boards recognize that this can be allowable for the taxpayer. We can't, um, can't propose a school that, that we can't afford to pay for. So everyone's working diligently to try to, um, you know, it's, it's widespread agreement that this is, uh, that excluding outside the levy uh, will not be paid for with, uh, operational cash flow. And, uh, we're trying to make that a situation where, um, everyone sees enough value in the building that they decide to, to vote yes on their ass tail. And it's a decision that, uh, that they can afford. So we won't, we won't receive a hundred percent yes, but it's the word. We want to make sure we are in a position to get it off.
There was an issue that came up when we were talking budget that I just wanted to bring up here so that people can start thinking about it. Um, there was a question that, that other people had heard that brought, brought to us that when we're talking about the Shake Lane School, we rightly talk about the changes in the, the teaching and in the supportive space to support the students that we're seeing now and the different ways we're teaching, et cetera. Um, it was asked, so are those changes in space and, and how, and the students that we're supporting, is that going up through the schools? Well, we need to put that kind of space in Russell Street and in the middle school. And I'm not sure how to answer that. So I thought I would bring it and, and I didn't, I don't think you need to answer it right this minute. I wanted to let you know that people in the community are, are, you know, hearing what we're saying, understanding, appreciating it, but also kind of rightly asking, okay, those students actually grow up and go to a different school than what?
I mean, logically, the logic applies to this situation. There, there will or could be an effect at the Russell Street School, but Russell Street School was designed differently. It was renovated in eighteen thousand and ten. The Shake Lane Project is going to have one more classroom for eight. And, and can't use the word prove, they're in agreement that, that we need one other classroom for grade this time. There may need to be either an addition or some portables brought in, but it's really hard to tell at this point in time when you, you look at Russell Street School. Are there possibilities within that structure that we can figure? And, and we're going to have to watch that population if this time goes on. When you've heard me speak about the fact that the, uh, population of students in our nation, in our state is declining. And it's already affecting the enrollment at, uh, post-secondary education. It's affecting the enrollment in, in towns and cities. We're fortunate here. We we're, we're growing and, and we have school choice and, and some helps offset any, any decreases that we have, uh, community student decline. So we are in good shape, but I, we're not going to be bursting at the seams. I, I can't see that happening when it's, uh, there are going to be some huge, um, housing projects that will come to town. And if you, you look at the demographics of, of some of the people that are moving into our town, they don't necessarily, um, set the, um, the, uh, I guess, expectation that one might have that would be a young family with, with, with children. That's not necessarily the case. Number of those houses that are, that are for sale in Lexington are a million plus. Well, you think about that, that's, uh, that's a lot of money for a startup for people just starting up. So I think we need to be cautious. I'm, I'm thrilled as, as superintendent that MSBA did recognize that we needed another class, classroom for grade. So we'll, we'll monitor the enrollment as we do every year. DESDEC has a enrollment profile for us on a yearly basis as well. So it is, it is just too premature. The middle school and high school are, are fairly moderate and they're in great shape. And, and those two schools, as per MSBA guidelines, were designed to add another weight on if necessary. But we're not talking about a full build or anything. If something had happened, so it's much more costly. And, and within those schools, there, there may be a way to reorganize a, a bit as well. And, and we also have to remember that at the middle school from grade six to grade seven, there's a, a draw to, uh, two private schools. We lose, we work from ten fifteen students depending on the year. From grade eight to grade nine, there's a, a draw for students, some students to ten official tech. And then the other one in grade six to seven, largely with a part of charge. So that is, is a challenge that we have in our district because we have to make sure that we have sufficient students coming up through our middle school. So when they enter high school, we, we are able to offer a full complement of programming. Because, you know, if you add up those numbers, it could be twenty-five to thirty students that we're, we're losing on of those grades with, with the, the two, uh, opportunities for for our students and families to choose other schools to go to. It was a little tricky. We've been successful to this point. I hope that helps.
Yeah, yeah. I just, it actually isn't really my question.
Right, of course.
But it's.
Part of the conversation.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, as we go out and talk to, to the public and, you know, if, if they're asking questions, I want to share with you so that we can.
I add some things here and certainly you all are in the detail of, of Shake Lane projects, which is correct, but my, and my bias is now intelligent, we can will show in this, but I think the investment that we make particularly in our younger children can and should look different than as children get older and age group. So if we're talking about more classrooms in the younger grades and better ratios, that not, that doesn't necessarily have to be the same, even if you had an opportunity to renovate Russell Street School, then it means we would do exactly what we're doing in Shake Lane because I think developmentally, what our students need from K two or pre-K two looks different than three to five. And I think we're making an investment in our students in the younger years, which will pay dividends as they sort of move on and grow older. And so perhaps that is not the answer, but an answer, uh, you know, I think the renovations are appropriate, developmentally appropriate for that age group and for the investment in students in that age and And for the investment in students in that age and it doesn't necessarily mean the same has to be happening.
That's a great point.
Yeah, and that's, that's was what my instinct was, was the profound difference in, in a child between six and a half and eight.
Yeah.
Is, is it, you know, like, it, it doesn't mean you take the same and move it up all the way up.
Not before, yeah, like, should we have outdoor classrooms in the high school? Definitely, but, you know, inappropriate also here. Um, it's, it's just great that we can do that.
And if I can add too, I think, because I've had to navigate that conversation a little bit too, Michelle can give me like kind of a good anecdote for explaining the differences between. Uh, how the kids, the demands the kids have on school buildings as they age. If you think about parents, I guess, who have young kids at our house, our kids probably take up like fifty percent of every single room. Just for things to thrive in our house, just to function, to thrive in our house. As they get older, as they're teenagers, that's, those space needs are, are less, those demands, the wear and tear, all of those things are less. So Shaker Lane is really setting up the building blocks for this big capacity for these very tiny people. But that capacity is not needed as they move on to like the different schools. Uh, so I found that to be kind of something that can be relatable to their parents to understand like, oh, right, like.
Yeah.
My house did, my house was a disaster and it needed more space and was getting, was beat up. You know, how wonderful would it have been to have a perfectly designed home for a toddler?
Well, and that's the, the brilliance of having a K to two and a three to five school, which so many districts don't.
Yeah.
Easily a two elementary school that were K to six.
Nope.
But to be able to design a school that meets the needs of K to three students, and it should look different than for the graders.
Yeah.
For sure.
I like that.
Yeah, great explanation. I have also heard a, the question, are we in need of a new school because of school choice? And the answer is no. School choice is a, is an opportunity for us to maintain enrollment, not increase. And throughout the years uh, in any, any district you're in, you, you have various numbers of students in each grade. Doesn't matter whether you have a thousand students in a school or not, not all grades are, are close in numbers, it's just the way it works. So we've taken the opportunity with those grades that have fewer students to um, sustain the number of staff we have in those grades. By taking in school choice to, so it's uh, it's better for our children, it's better for our staff. We don't have to move staff around from grade to grade depending on enrollment. And it, it uh, it just stabilizes our school district, so it has nothing to do with uh, needing a new Shaker Lane School.
I feel like I need to ask my branding question of, do we have any listening sessions coming up and, I don't know.
We are inviting the seniors to uh, tour the Shaker Lane School on a Wednesday. You have that date, you want me?
February fifth. It's not really released.
Yeah.
Well, you're certainly welcome uh, to attend and, and tour with our seniors. We had a great meeting with the uh. Human and Elder Services, I always want to say Council on Agent Services, used to be that many years ago, but uh. We have some great questions. Um, it was really cool to uh, have two ex-school committee members there from the nineteen nineties. And uh, actually the superintendent that was um, superintendent of Littleton in eighteen ninety-two. So it was really cool to, to have those people in the room and, and have them contribute to the discussion.
Was that Dr. Foster?
No. Frankel.
Franco, Franco, right, yes.
Yeah. So nice to, nice to meet him and, and uh, but they had, they had a great semester. And you know, thanks to, to Wendy, Beth, um, Michelle, uh, I mean, and uh, actually Steve and Ernie was with us. And um, Jim Duggan, the town administrator. We really had a nice conversation and, and some of the people said, you know, after listening to you, we get it. Because they're, you know, seniors, they're fixed income and, and, and where they saw absent concerns. But they, they did understand that, that education has, has dramatically changed and we had a good conversation about that. And, and the flyers that we used, posters that we used, really were just a, a reference point. It's the story that you tell and the context that you add to those numbers that make the difference. And I don't know, I went away feeling really good about the conversation and, and uh, you know, they, they weren't quick to leave when we were done, so. That was a nice signal. They didn't get up and walk out the door right away, so. I mean, the more we, we do these kinds of things, the, the, the word's gonna get out more. Uh, I do have dates for school council meetings and PTA meetings. I'll send them out tomorrow to the school committee. Cause we were going to try our way and join opportunities for school committee members to talk about the project at those meetings, so. Send them out tomorrow and Justin and I, and we want to attend one, just let us know and we'll, we'll fill in those spaces. I think it's important that we bring those two, two uh, volunteer uh, groups on board with us. They're part of the community and, and they're, they're uh, contributing a lot of time to our schools as well, so they're a part of the team, right?
Is that tomorrow, September fifth?
The Wednesday.
Do you have a time?
It's.
Two thirty.
Two thirty?
Two thirty.
Is that specifically for the um? Yeah, it's not Council on Agent, what is it?
Human and Elder Services. But it doesn't matter, anybody can.
Anybody can go?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're open to that.
Yeah, that's why.
Right, yeah, we, we also talked uh, with the town administration and some elected officials about the. Town meeting, the fall town meeting with the bonus table, to start that meeting thirty minutes early. So that we would have enough time to, to do a presentation, answer questions before, we haven't heard back. I think that would be advantageous to have that opportunity to talk to you.
Right.
You know, so might we consider working to have childcare available?
We will, yeah, we'll figure that out.
Excellent, thank you.
May, May town meeting is May sixth, by the way.
Yeah, May sixth, I'll jump in on that point. So I, when we, when we discussed that idea, I thought the uh, the specifics of that were. We would likely present Shaker Lane updates at the May time, May sixth.
But we can do that as well.
And last time we had ten minutes and we went twelve and this time it might be like, maybe there was twenty minutes from the floor.
Sure.
And that's regular time meeting, so there's a bunch of business needs to be attended to. So the idea was proposed, even though town meeting starts at seven, perhaps there's a Shaker Lane meeting that starts at six thirty. So anyone and all should come at six thirty and by the time seven, that way we don't, that way we don't bump that regular town business meeting. We can try to catch the early birds and get the word out like, please come at six thirty, cause that's when we're gonna start talking about Shaker Lane. And then seven o'clock, we'll get into regular town meeting. I think we'd have an issue with, unless they were just gonna move town meeting earlier. Cause we couldn't, we couldn't make points or hear from s- interested citizens before they called the meeting to order. That's the night that we're gonna be voting on it, well.
Um. I think they were gonna have conversations with the town moderator to see what his appetite for that was.
Okay, we're, we're hoping that they will jump on board for that, so I think it's pretty good. So, January twenty-ninth, next Wednesday at ten o'clock, this is the opportunity for us to. Present to the, to an MSBA subcommittee. This is where we pitch our need for a new school, the square footage that we need, and talk about our education plan. Talk about the preliminary design of the new school. Uh, we have twenty minutes to do that presentation. Presentation is done, we're gonna rehearse it on Monday. Uh, Michelle and I will be uh, speaking, um, the athletic education part of the plan. Studio G and, and our O P M will take various technical sections, sections of the presentation as well. Uh, but I'm not sure, I think everybody, almost everybody was at the last meeting when we met with the town. The new school on the schematic that was presented was rotated sixty degrees counterclockwise. Because of some concerns about uh, perspective sewer lines in the future and uh, obviously wetlands.
Mm-hmm.
But when everything came back, uh, they were able to put it back where it should be, so they went sixty degrees clockwise. And it doesn't change the configuration of school, it doesn't change the, the layout of the parking lots. What it does do is provide more natural light in, in the school during the day, that'll be more uh, receptive to solar panels. It's a good change. So after that meeting, the subcommittee of the MSBA will. Meet with the full committee of the MSBA and give a recommendation to them. And then we go back on February twenty-fifth, don't have a time yet, but that's when they will vote. On as to whether they accept the plan as presented and we'll talk about the square footage a lot, et cetera. And move on to the next phase, with this uh, design phase project, so. Exciting, we're, exciting uh, place to be and, and when I look back, last May-June and the summer. The load was worse than a heavy, heavy wet, I mean, we all, then gave up our summers to, to get this done. And in hindsight, it was the right thing to do, is where, where we are now. One thing I was surprised by at the meeting that attended uh, this week's display at that time, so. It was this morning. The only reason I had to help you because I was invited to the meeting, but they didn't invite me. So I was scrambling to, to find a link to this meeting, I had to, yeah, so it was this morning. And uh, the trajectory for the bill has us at um, August twenty-twenty-eight. For completion and moving in September, which is a year ahead of what we've all been talking about since inception of the project. So, well, just a heads up, nobody, you know, from Studio G or the O P M blamed when that tape came out, so. Going to assume for the time being that that's a possibility.
Very quick conversation with um, Shaker Lane uh, PTA representative uh, this afternoon. Two, two ideas came out of that, one was um, you know, ultimately, it's a yes-no vote at town meeting. And I think we should have uh, like a yes vote, obviously, there's gonna be information that costs this. And no vote doesn't cost you zero, uh, the, the eight, like, the status of the Shaker Lane Building. And the work that's gonna need to go into that building over the years to maintain um, the level of services that we are providing. Will have a cost. Um, so it's not, you know, okay, am I writing a check for this or am I writing a check for zero? It's a no vote ha- has a cost, so we want to make sure we get that in our information at some point. And then we've talked a lot about um, meetings, like that's, that's a specific date and pattern that people need to make themselves available. And when you have um, especially younger children, you're often times running on their schedule. So if we could get out like some short um, videos, maybe from the staff about what doesn't work in the building or what they need or that type of stuff. Or parent voices, the PTA or school committee or whoever wants to be in like these little clips. That stuff can go on the mom's page, which is still where all information in town is disseminated.
Yes. Have we done the tour?
I'm, I'm not, I'm, I know we.
We have a video tour already done, but, I mean, we're, we're at the point, as soon as we. We move through the current phase that we're in, we need to get a whole day of cartooning again, but then this is real need to make. And talk, take a look at the next video and, and that could be part of that, that new video. We also. Right. finalized the plan with uh, Gilfoyle for VR and promotion of the project as well, so. Now having two entities helping us out with our own efforts as well, I think we're, we're pretty well supported at this point in time.
Okay.
You know, anything we, any of you think about, uh, they'll bring to us. We want to reach as many people as we can. And I'm, I'm hoping all of you feel that you have enough information now to promote the project. And when you're out in socializing groups, you know, you have an opportunity to talk about the project. So that's a good way to get the word out.
Uh, I thought this one was a good one, but making, making the information available to those when they have time to access it. And also in, in a uh, shorter period of time, cause they might, you might catch them for ten or fifteen minutes when they're in front of their computer and they wanna, an update. Versus asking them to attend a specific meeting that might be an outlaw or something like that, so.
I think the cost of yes and cost of no, really, even like as a digital, both the, the finance type and also like. It's in very simple, bold terms of like, flight, it was a test, it was such a great, do we have numbers for the cost of now?
No, and they would be, you know, they would be hypothetical, but um, we could, we could spend some time on that. So that we um, are presenting numbers that we can, that sound reasonable and that we can support. But yeah. We good on that?
Mm-hmm.
Sure, we covered the budget subcommittee information already. Um, policy subcommittee, anything to report, Stephen?
Okay, I will be sending the policy subcommittee a draft policy for graduation requirements soon. We're gonna bring that to the February sixth.
Great. It's February sixth, that's our next meeting. Is that when, is that when the um, Littleton Youth Baseball and Softball wanna come?
Yes.
Okay, so, a little, uh, just for everyone's benefit, um, next meeting we'll hear a presentation for Littleton. Youth Baseball and Softball about a proposed project associated with lights at Jet Hill, which is super exciting. Uh, it will really enhance that uh, athletic complex. Um, there's no other business before the school committee?
Yes.
Um, anyone's home meeting is Tuesday basis.
Thank you.
Anything else? Everyone's fine, we're good? I know asked for a motion to adjourn.
That we adjourned.
Motion made by Elaine. Second by Vino, those uh, indicate uh, by saying. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes, yes, we have adjourned, thank you. We're going to get my words on time.